I would like to call the adjourned meeting of the Public Financing Authority, Utility -- no, that's not for this.
Yeah, everything.
Is it? Utility Authority Housing Successor Agency and City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zamora.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Zamora.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rounds.
Here.
And Mayor Sarno.
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Okay, next, public comments. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on closed session items only. For those that are here to make public comment, you will have the opportunity, once the deputy city clerk announces your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
No speakers, Mayor.
I will now close public comments. Closed session, item number one and two. I would like to call upon the deputy city attorney to read this closed session item, please.
So there are two items that will be discussed in closed session. Number one would be a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, one case. Second matter will be a closed session discussion of public employment pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957B1, and it's the city manager evaluation.
We will now recess to closed session. We will reconvene the meeting after the closed session discussion to hear a report from the deputy city attorney and to continue with the rest of the meeting. Thank you.[101.42]
We need the attorney. Hello, sir? Hello? Huh? I was gonna send him there too, but I knew you'd get mad. Fernando, let the city attorney know. You can't start without you. I would like to reconvene the meeting. Deputy City Attorney, is there any closed session report?
We had closed session on both items on the agenda. Staff received direction and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. We will now continue to the rest of the meeting. I would like to call upon Councilmember Rodriguez to lead us in today's invocation.
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on this council as we meet tonight. Grant us both wisdom and compassion as we make decisions about the future of our community. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
Amen. I would like to call upon the youth leadership to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Can everyone put their right hand over their heart?
Wait, wait, you gotta come up here. Oh, you're new?
Can everyone please put their right hand over their heart? Ready?
Begin. Allegions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, young ladies. Wait, wait, you're not going anywhere. You gotta turn around and face them and let them know who you are and what school you go to and a little bit about yourself.
Good evening, council. I'm Jayden Brown. I'm currently a youth leadership committee member. I go to Santa Fe. I'm recently 16 years old. I'm a junior there, and there I'm very involved. I'm in ASB and girls' flag football.
What about, "I'm your neighbor"? You know, didn't say "I'm your neighbor"?
Jay Sarno is my neighbor.
Good evening. My name is Serenity. I go to Santa Fe High School. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm involved in soccer and girls' flag football.
Nice. And before they leave, could we all sing "Happy Birthday" for Jayden, please? Because today, yesterday was her birthday, and we want to sing "Happy Birthday." So, ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jayden. Happy birthday to you. Did I embarrass you? Nice. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
She's never coming back.
Yeah.
I would like to introduce the following representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. Ross Guile, digital web design and embroidery. Ross? Nico Schubin, Servewell Disposal. Presentations, recognition of the Beautification Award winners. I would like to call upon Library Service Manager, Deborah Rah. How do you say the last name? Rea. Rea.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to present of the Historical and Community Preservation Committee's Beautification Awards. Each year, the committee selects residents and businesses to recognize their efforts in maintaining and beautifying their homes and workplaces. Some of the winners are present tonight to receive their plaques, and I'd like to ask the members of the committee who are present to come up and help present the awards. 11133 El Gray Street. That's Ilario and the Lopez family.
There's a different picture. It's a different picture. I don't know how far away you want my...
Oh, no.
The next one. Move on to the next.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yes.
Yours.
You want it? You can have it.
The next one? Okay. 11555 El Kerr Street. Okay. Ilario and the Lopez family.
You can have both if you like, but you get both mortgages.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn around, we'll take a picture. Right here, we'll take a picture.
All right. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
That's Robert Rojas and the Rojas family.
There you go. That's for you.
Thank you.
Makes us so happy, but younger couple.
No, you're fine. Stand, go, we'll get, don't worry about it.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
9354 Pioneer Boulevard. 11257 Silbert Street.
I was, I wasn't.
11608 Terradel Street. That's Glenn and Elizabeth Gomez and their family. That's Glenn and Elizabeth Gomez and their family.
You just got it?
All right. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
One-one-seven-four-three Terradel Street. That's Lisa and Gerardo Diaz. Us.
Us. That's a lot of her work. That's a lot of work, but we did it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'll tell you, it's a labor of love. Did you do any of it?
All of it.
All of it, brother?
That's all my work.
Really?
Yeah, I got pictures.
Nice. Before and after, huh?
No, you know, that's my boys. My boys cut the grass. That's right.
Nice.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Nine-two-three-three Vicki Drive. That's the Piedra family.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, take a picture?
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
If so, for the business awards, for our mark refreshments, we have Jeff Slager and Bernie Morkins.
Wow, really nice. Where you at?
Yes.
Beautiful. Right down the corner.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Don't push me over there.
The next one is Farmer Boys, and accepting the award is manager Kiran Patel.
You didn't bring any food with you? There's a lot of people here that are hungry. You know?
You can come over, man.
Or you could come back and get this and bring the food.
You don't wanna give me? You can come, thank you.
Congratulations.
You all invited.
Thank you.
But if I not here, they're not gonna give you food.
Scoot him. Get in the middle. Get in the middle.
All right. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Thank you. Congratulations, sir.
Next one is Gelson Distribution. And the next one is Gold Coast Ingredients, and we have a representative from Gold Coast Ingredients, Julia Bodnar.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. Oops. Sorry. Hi. Thank you.
Where's that?
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is International Forklift. The next is Rinchem, and we have the manager from Rinchem here tonight.
Congratulations, sir.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
And then the last two, Seal Methods, Inc. and SSR Motorsports. And those are our winners for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Beautiful picks this year. Next, we have social media analytics. I would like to call upon Community Service Manager Kylie Torres.
Good evening, honorable mayor and esteemed council members. It's truly an honor to stand before you today and share the remarkable achievements of the Creative Media and Communications Team, affectionately known as the CMC team, over the past nine months. In our pursuit of fostering a more connected and engaged community, we have made significant strides in laying down a solid foundation for our ongoing success. At the heart of these successes lies our commitment to effective communications. We've embraced a multifaceted approach, combining traditional mediums like our beloved All Things Santa Fe Springs guide, flyers, posters, and banners, with modern tools such as social media platforms, email blasts, and text notifications. Over the last nine months, we've diligently worked to enhance our communication channels. But today, I'd like to spotlight a few key initiatives. In April, we launched our, we launched our monthly e-newsletter with a catchy slogan, "Stay in the know of the 90670." If you haven't yet subscribed, I encourage you to visit our city's website today and join the conversation. We've also revamped our GoSFS app, introducing a new sleek logo. And in addition to submitting work requests directly on the app, we have added new features, including one that allows users to register for recreation programs. So if you haven't already, I highly recommend downloading the app and experiencing it for yourself, and you can get one of these cards on the way out of the area. To break down silos and improve internal communications, we've initiated monthly department liaison meetings, fostering better coordination and communications among departments. In our effort to bolster emergency preparedness, we've instituted bi-weekly emergency communications meetings with police services, fire and rescue, Whittier PD staff, ensuring that we're ready to deliver critical information swiftly when it matters most. We've ruled out new printed materials like the Budget Snapshot, designed to demystify the city's annual budget and engage our community in fiscal transparency. And you can pick one of these up in the lobby as well. And as a team, we've invested in our professional growth, attending various trainings and workshops from mastering drone piloting to honing our media relations skills. However, one of our crowning achievements has been the remarkable growth of our social media platforms. Today, we're proud to boast 22,432 users, marking a 14% increase in our presence, including those on YouTube. This is an astounding feat, especially when compared to industry standards where local governments are seeing overall decreases in their followers, according to Hootsuite Analytics. The surge in followers isn't just a statistic, it's a testament to the trust that we're building with the community. But what does this mean for our city? It means that more people are participating in our events, programs, and services. And while city staff across departments have been working tirelessly to deliver top-notch services, the visibility generated through targeted marketing has been crucial. By leveraging trends and enhancing message quality, we've seen an impressive 80% increase in participation across five key programs compared to last year, and we're seeing increases in attendance and use of services across the board in all departments. Looking ahead, the CMC team is excited to roll out several new initiatives, including further enhancements to the GoSFS app to promote community stewardship, allowing us to tackle issues like graffiti removal and street repairs more effectively. Currently, the app has 1,034 users, a number we aim to increase next year. However, our Public Works Department staff have already resolved over 3,766 reported issues in this past year, demonstrating the app's impact on allowing the community to participate in making Santa Fe Springs better.
Kylie, if I may, on the GoSFS app, I just want to thank Councilmember Zamora. He brought up some of the deficiencies we had with our website and the app, and I know we're working with the app operator, and we have a meeting here coming pretty soon to kind of get, make it more robust and make it more.
User-friendly.
User-friendly for our community. So hopefully in the next several months, we'll, we'll have something, a new platform with a lot more information about our city government and our uses. So, you know, thank you for that support. Thank you.
Other future initiatives that I'm excited to announce include expanding our materials to be available in both English and Spanish, starting with the new upcoming edition of the Telegraph newsletter, set to be released in just a few weeks. Launching a military and community banners program to honor those who serve our country. Increasing the opt-ins for our emergency communications notification system, Everbridge, excuse me, to ensure we reach more residents during critical times. Transitioning our website and email domains from .org to .gov, well ahead of the state mandate, AB 1637 deadline in 2029, and aligning with federal standards. Obtaining Federal Aviation Administration drone certifications for our staff, allowing us to operate much larger drones and enhance our video capabilities, particularly at events. Producing a city accomplishments guide set to be mailed out in the coming weeks also will be available in English and Spanish. Initiating a citywide rebranding campaign to refresh and elevate the city's image. And developing a new, more user-friendly city website to engage and serve our residents, businesses, and visitors better. So once again, thank you for allowing me this privilege to discuss the CMC team and our accomplishments. It's an honor to be a part of this incredible city and team, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Anybody have any question? Thank you for the great job that you guys do, and can't wait to see what happens next year, because I know it's gonna get better and better.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Have a nice day.
Uh, changes to the agenda. Mr. Robbdi, are there any changes to the agenda?
Um, mayor, the only change you have before you is on the dais for item number thirty.
Number what?
Item thirty.
Thirty?
That's just added language that's afterward.
Okay.
To the, to the ordinance.
All right. Next, public comments. Public comments are now open. Uh, the public may address the city council on any number, any non-public hearing items on the agenda or any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You have a pro, uh, opportunity to speak for three minutes. Once the deputy city clerk announces your name, deputy city clerk.
Do we have any speakers?
Yes, mayor, we have two speakers. First, I'd like to call up Lee Squire.
Lee Squire, Vietnam War veteran, Cold War veteran. Good evening, mayor and city council. Subject: August is Purple Heart Month, Freedom is Not Free. I do this presentation in honor of those in Santa Fe Springs who were killed in action or wounded in action. They shed their blood defending freedoms in the U.S. Constitution. In their honor and their, and to their family's honor, I hereby present to the office of mayor the picture of the Purple Heart Medal. Some gave all, all gave some, killed in action and wounded in action.
Thank you, sir. Can we take a picture?
No, with you. Turn around. Turn around, sir.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the service.
Next, we have Stella Bastida.
Good evening, council, and I always take this opportunity with great respect and regard to addressing each and every single one of you. I have several things on my mind that I want to speak about this evening. First of all is, once again, the crossing at Oranday and Whiteland. Not only have many of hot, I've had issues with that crossing since the new stop signs have been installed, but many of my neighbors on my street. One was hit the other day. It was a hit-and-run. He followed the person, and unfortunately, they drove recklessly through the neighborhood, and he ended up reporting it to public service, public safety, and gave as much information as possible. But that is just one occurrence that is happening every single day on that area. These stop signs that have been installed are not stopping the reckless drivers from just disregarding the stop signs. It's a four-way stop sign. They disregard. Every single day, you see someone zooming by. And my question is, again, we cannot have, from what I hear, we cannot have law enforcement there every day, watching the area, but what else, what other measures can the city take to stop this? Because the next person that does get hurt, it will be not pleasant, and it will probably bring law, lawsuits against the city. And I would hate for someone's family or families to be put in a position where they're permanently damaged or even if they're deceased. So again, we need to have that looked at, because it's happening every single day, all day long. And the next thing I would like to address is the parquet over on Bradwell Avenue. That area behind the city, behind the parquet, is supposedly Caltrans property. But that has been in disarray since 2019, probably 2018. The trees fall down, they stay there. No one has come to clean them, or unless they've fallen over where there is the city property, they do something. But it is a tinderbox waiting to happen. My next topic is, we're here with election time, and Mr. Zamora, unfortunately, one of your surrogates is going down our block on Bradwell and telling the residents not to vote for John Mora. And Mr. Zamora, I don't know you, but I only know you from council and from Jersey when I see you there. If this representative of yours is going around saying disparaging things about Mr. Mora, I would kindly ask you to have them stop, because it's, that person lacks integrity and they're a reflection of you. So, that's all that I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Mr. Robbdi, could we maybe get, uh, like, CHP and Captain Reese to maybe figure out some type of traffic cop for that situation? Thanks, sir. That's it? Okay, uh, staff communications. Mr. Robbdi, do we have any staff communication?
We have none tonight, mayor.
Uh, old business, old business, item number five. Approve the professional service agreement with Infosend, Inc., print and mail service for water utility billing. I would like to call upon Mr. Robbdi.
Thank you, mayor. Um, this item was brought to the council at the last council meeting, but we pulled it with the anticipation that we would meet with a couple other vendors, particularly one local one, to see if they could potentially get, get us a better pricing for the same scope of work. Unfortunately, uh, those two vendors were not able to provide us the scope of work we were looking for, particularly in, in terms of emails. But we are recommending what's looking for, particularly in terms of emails, but we are recommending what's before you for approval.
Any discussion? Can I get a motion? Approval for item number five?
I'll move.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Item number six, amendment number one to facility use agreement for the athletic fields and facilities with Metro Little League. I would like to call upon Moskobbidi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call upon Gus Hernandez to present the item.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is an amendment to the facility use agreement between Metro Little League and the city. We originally entered into this agreement in January twenty twenty-three and is set to expire in twenty twenty-six. The amendment is to formalize a new partnership between Metro Little League and Enfuego, and the partnership is fully supported by city staff. Enfuego U may sound familiar. We introduced Enfuego at the July sixteenth council meeting, where we were directed to explore partnership opportunities over at Little Lake Park and Santa Fe Springs Athletic Fields in partnership with Enfuego. After that July sixteenth meeting, Metro Little League solicited the assistance of Enfuego to produce their fall baseball program. And so Metro Little League, for the past year, has been struggling for participation. In the spring of twenty twenty-four, they had a hundred and sixty-three participants that they reported to us. They were forced to interleague with other local Little Leagues, and forty-eight percent of those participants were Santa Fe Springs residents. This year, for their fall, they have approximately fifty participants registered, which is not enough to have an in-house league, hence is why they solicited the assistance of Enfuego U to produce the fall program. So under the proposed amendment, Enfuego U becomes a key partner with Metro Little League in managing the fall recreation baseball program and overseeing significant renovations over at Lake Center Athletic Park. And these renovations would be fully funded by Enfuego, no cost to the city, no cost to Metro Little League. So this partnership is fully supported by city staff, and the amendment formalizes the partnership between Metro Little League and Enfuego. We do have the president of Enfuego here, as well as his team here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And Gus, if I may, when you mentioned that there's work being done, renovations, just want to be clear, these are all maintenance renovations that are occurring outside.
That's correct. That's simply maintenance renovations where the fields are being improved significantly. It's something that we've never done as a city to really create a great playing surface for the children.
I have a question. So the maintenance that we're doing, that's not going to hinder any traffic over there in that area? Because I know when it comes to going to school, it's difficult for parents, you know, with that whole process. I mean, Jay knows it is right across the street, so is that going to create any kind of?
Councilmember, we worked with the school district. We worked closely with them, letting them know what our scope of work was, the times we would be working. All the work is within the ballfields, all the equipment and equipment they're using to maintain those fields are within. And there's one field that we will work together as far as timing because it's closer to the school grounds. We haven't touched that field yet, but when we do, we'll make sure we work with the school district to ensure we're not, but we are not hindering any traffic, any car vehicle traffic at all whatsoever.
My second question, I know that this is a joint partnership. I know that I talked to Mayor Sarno, and one of the biggest things was making sure that Enfuego had a partnership, had an equal opportunity, fifty-fifty say-so, because we don't want, you know, one individual or a couple individuals, an entity to dictate over the other ones. I know that they're trying to bring college athletes to teach our kids or to teach our community, which is, I think, is awesome because it gives them a job, gives them a sense of purpose, and, and, you know, another thing I'm going to ask in Fuego is, besides just, you know, when that comes. Alex, if you can go to the podium then right now, then, sorry about that. The other question that I'm going to ask is, I mean, I know that we're looking at baseball and softball, and besides that, if maybe we can also look at getting, you know, athletes, college athletes, to help out with soccer. Our soccer program is immense. It's, it does such a great job. We get individuals not only from our area, but, I mean, neighboring cities come play over here because they're overpriced in other areas, and we as a city, I mean.
For three to five hundred kids?
Huh?
Probably over three to five hundred.
Three to five hundred kids, and I think we even started, it's not only on Saturdays, but we also started on Sundays. Is that correct, Gus? So we're, I'm not trying to put more on you, but I am, I'm sorry for doing that. I think you heard me from the last time, because if we're going to utilize things that we do, you know, I'd rather have you just know that you're jumping all in and with this partnership, not just, you know.
Collegially being.
Yeah, collegially, yeah, bringing, you know, I understand you said USC and some people may not, or UCLA, but.
Or UCLA.
Yeah, both schools, you know what I mean? But still. But other than that, I just know that I don't see the other person who's for Little League, so.
No, he's, James Trahir is Metro, he's, he's part of the board.
Okay, cool.
And Councilmember, if I may, I think you're right on the button with what, in general, we're trying to accomplish. You know, and Alex kind of speaks for Fuego, but the fields where Metro currently is utilizing was a great opportunity for us to really enhance that and enhance the surfaces and make that an amazing place for kids to play. And we felt that the partnership with Enfuego was going to enhance Little League, and I think, you know, Little League in this area has been, has been dying down, signups have been low. So the goal here is not to replace Little League, but to actually enhance it and grow it and make sure that, you know, next, next spring, when they're signing up, that they have, you know, more kids to play Little League.
And that's what I wanted to make sure that, you know, I know some of you guys who are here, you know, we've been in talks with Enfuego, and we don't want our Metro Little League to feel like, you know, they're being pushed aside, this is to, you know, help the program, to get kids there. I heard that the, there's not too many kids who've, who've tried to come out for, for Little League, and so even if it hinders or it does something with the, you know, the Little League system in general, if we eventually have to go the route to change it to an association, whatever it takes, you know, to make sure our community is happy, and, and, you know, it just, you know, I was talking to Jayden, and I was letting him know that we have to do a better job at, you know, looking to fight obesity and making sure that we have sports and different types of sports, I mean, and different types of arts or different types of things that kids can, can get involved, that they can be engaged and actively engaged. So, you know, anything we can do to, you know, if it's a dancing class, if it's, you know, zumba, if it's anything that we can do to, to help out, and I'm not putting that on you in Fuego, but, you know, if you have that, you know, I mean, but in the, in the college system, like I said, I mean, whatever helps these kids get jobs or internships, I mean, whatever we need to do to, to make sure their resume looks, you know, bright for the future, I mean, that's what we want to do here for our kids.
I think one of the best things, and if I can just piggyback off what Joe Angel's saying, is having somebody, collegiate-level athletes that, that have gone to UCLA and D-one schools, and being able to have you come here and teach our young kids and really give them the experience and the understanding, because we can't do that. And us coaches, as dads, we're not D-one players, you know, our city manager got to play D-one baseball, but for you guys to do that and teach our kids, I think we're setting a trend, and, and we're doing something, we're being proactive instead of reactive because Little League is, I'm sad to say it's a dying sport, but it doesn't have to be. If we rebrand it and build it to be bigger than ever, but it has to be part of something else to get it to there. So I hope, working together, that really we set a standard here, and maybe other cities are going to copy us.
Mayor, if I may, the initial intent that you have tonight is a start of Enfuego's launch, and I think this is, was an opportunity that came to us and to them. We're working with the Los Angeles Dodgers to help us with, with the field prep and maintenance, but we're also looking at the future and what other, other opportunities come in other fields, where we can incorporate soccer and look at multipurpose fields for soccer and for softball. Today, we had the presence of the UCLA head softball coach was here. I saw a picture.
Yeah, Coach Kelly is here, but if you don't mind me interjecting, Alexis Ramirez and Dalen, can you please come, come up here to the podium? Beyond just, what Jay said is correct, youth rec sports are dying. And I, at the last meeting, I do want to reiterate what I said, which was, this is not a knock on the board members of Metro Little League, it's just a sign of the times. What's happened is today, this modern day of sports, parents are seeking, they want more. I spoke, I've spoken to a handful of Santa Fe Springs parents who have said they've left Metro looking for more development. That's also the same thing I hear from Silmar Independent Baseball League and Silmar Pony League, the same thing that I hear over at West Los Angeles Little League. The healthiest Little Leagues in this country are still losing to travel ball, and parents have this notion that if I travel and I spend all this money, my kids will one day be Dalen Reyes or Alexis Ramirez. Beyond that, it's, it's, they're being sold a bag of dreams. Parents are, leave your kid with me, he's going to be the next Kobe Bryant. Leave your kid with me, he'll be the next Alexis Ramirez. The reality is that it probably won't happen if we just look at the numbers. And number two, sports at the youth level should be recreational, should be fun. It is scientifically proven that pre-puberty kids think in a world of play and imagination. So we are not only bringing, essentially, we're bringing a curriculum, we're bringing a safe atmosphere, and we, our goal is to revive Little League because growing up with your friends truly is more powerful than where you're going to end up having a sort, learning how to socialize, learning how to deal with adversity socially at the youngest ages is really what youth sports teaches you. And we're losing that. We don't even teach our kids, how can we teach our kids to prioritize time if, as parents, they're spending time in San Diego and Norco, California, and Phoenix every single weekend chasing this dream, and they can both tell you their stories, but more than anything, even beyond that, what we're doing to impact people, and I want Alexis to introduce herself because, one, she's from this community, and it's pretty cool, we found some photos today that I wish we could put up there, but, two, also Dalen's background, Dalen's father also works, is, works in, for the.
City Pasadena is the assistant, assistant director.
Assistant, yeah, so he, assistant city manager of City Pasadena, and he's like, wow, this is really cool. We're in a city council, so I'm bringing him up here because he sees his father do something like this, he sees a future professionally, potentially working, you know, in government. If we can support, this is the ultimate, not even an internship, because he just graduated at UCLA, and this is a job. We're developing real, they have a skill set that his baseball career just ended a month ago, and he graduated at UCLA about a month ago, and now has a full-time job with us, thanks to us being able to siphon some money from the forty billion dollar business that is travel sports, meaning parents are willing to pay, and I'm saying pay, our rates are Little League rates, but if we could save parents money from not having to travel in our, especially in Latino communities, if we're able to reinvest our funds instead of spending two thousand dollars a go on a baseball tournament for eight-year-olds in San Diego, and we could save those two thousand dollars, guess what? In ten weeks, that's twenty thousand dollars.
And not, and not to interrupt you, I mean, if you look at Vegas itself, Las Vegas, I mean, you know, I mean, I have two nephews, so I'm going to speak on them, and I see my brother and my sister-in-law just going crazy, they're, they're two twins, but they can't be there for both at the same time. One wants to do one sport, one wants to do the other, and, and it just makes it real difficult because you know families for travel bars probably spending anywhere from ten thousand to thirty thousand dollars a year, and it's money they don't have, and you, I mean, I'm not saying that all these coaches are, are talking to kids about fantasy, but, you know, sometimes they are, I mean, and what's the reality? The reality is, I mean, if you have college athletes who are already there, it makes it easier because now they know what to expect next. I mean, they, everybody can talk to you about middle school, high school, but nobody can talk to you about college.
Right.
And that's the hard part because we have kids, and I know, that come from our communities, they go to college, and they struggle because they don't know what to expect there. So, so their stint is short, and we want to make sure that, you know, our community just does the best that they can, that they are embracing, and the finances, and this is why the partnership with Enfuego, it's, it's to relieve that checkbook from, from having you to say, hey, you have to go to Las Vegas for this tournament, and then the person who's, you know, hosting these tournaments, they're telling you what casinos you have to stay at. I mean, and some of these casinos are through, like, you know, MGM properties, like, you know, I'm not trying to give them a plug, but, you know, some of these properties are real expensive, and I look at it like, like, man, like, they're expected to pay for a room, they're expected to pay for this, now you have a whole team doing this, and, you know, but it's not fair for these kids, it's a lot of pressure on them, and what happens is eventually they just don't want to play no more.
Absolutely, and with that, I just want to use this second, I'd really want to give Lefty, or Alexis Ramirez, known as AKA Lefty. I'd like for her to just quickly introduce herself so you guys can see the type of people that are all here to coach kids here from Santa Fe Springs. And not only that, there's the little nugget in there, in her background.
Hello, I'm Alexis. So, yeah, they do call me Lefty, but I grew up, I started playing Little League here at Santa Fe Springs. My family was, the equipment managers, they ran the fields, they did the snack bar, my grandparents, so my grandparents live five minutes away from here, so I grew up in Santa Fe Springs my whole life. I'm also a first-generation college student, so getting to come back to the community where it started and give back to the kids that I once was is such a passion, and I think if I could redo my whole career, the one thing I would do is learn how to stay in love with the game. I didn't fall in love with the game and learn how to have fun again until I had this job, and I got to see how happy little kids were to just hit the ball, to hit the ball off the tee, to learn how to catch the ball. And I didn't succeed in my collegiate career until I worked this job, and I give credit to the man who's running it and the people we're surrounded with because they allow you to find your true passions, and I think that bleeds into your life, and those are the things that we want to instill in these young kids. And I think that a lot of us come from minority places, and we want to give back to those kids that we once were. And I think it's great that we're here, and I want to put my last stamp on those kids in Santa Fe Springs and hope to see another one of me at UCLA, Florida, Oklahoma, wherever it is, because I know it's a lot of those little kids' dreams, and for those kids that don't get to make it there, at least they had the experience of being in love with something, and it not just, and out of all the things in this world today, I would love for them to be in love with baseball, softball, soccer, whatever it is, because those are the outlets that truly bleed into your adult life, and I just think that Enfuego is just the place for student athletes, for kids, for adults. It just brings peace and happiness to a lot of people, and in the form of athletics, and I think that's what a lot of people can agree on. I mean, baseball is America's sport, so I think we could bring that back, and that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Are you a Dodger fan or a Yankee fan?
Yankee fan, better.
I'm a Dodger fan, yeah.
You know what we have to look to also? As females up here, we have three females that are going to be role models to young girls that think baseball's only.
And both is.
No, I'm saying girls.
They teach baseball.
They could still do, but I'm saying.
And boys, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying that.
And boys.
You guys are role models to these young girls, too, seeing that you, where you guys at, knowing that, here, you said, you're just from us, see, you're Santa Fe Springs, you know, and look at where you're at, college is available, college is affordable, or being able to, if you can play the sport and love the sport. So, I mean, I think that, besides you being here, attainable for our kids, but it's a learning process and letting them know to have hopes that they, there is college available, and you don't have to be a star to be on there, but you can give your heart and soul, like you guys did, and are actually helping, you know, open up those role model that these kids really need in the city. So, thank you.
I'll be brief. My name is Dalen Reyes, and I really think that you just hit it right on the nose there because I'd like to think that I know a little bit more about baseball than Lefty over here, but, I mean, I'm so jealous of the way that she's able to communicate with our kids and our teams because, at the end of the day, you're right, it's all about inspiring the next generation, because, I mean, I had my time. I loved my experience with baseball, I had really fond memories growing up. I played at Northridge Little League from, probably like eight into ten, and then it kind of got dilapidated and caused my family to do some more travel sports, and I'd be going to Phoenix, Vegas, all those places, like, on the random weekends, but that's really not what I needed. At the end of the day, I would love to have an opportunity to have Lefty as my coach and talk to me about, like, growing as a person and growing, just being more well-rounded, and it's not all about baseball, because at the end of the day, and at the end of these practices, if there, the kids are asking about homework, how we manage, like, our time, time management, how we spend time with our families, and then we get the opportunity to kind of give them the rundown on our day. and kind of just be more well-rounded. But like I said, I'm just so fortunate to have Alex in my life and I'm so blessed that he chose UCLA. Cause it's really a full student athlete development from elementary up to college. Like I didn't know what I was gonna do after, but I knew I wanted to be successful and I knew I was gonna work hard and just having the outlet. And I, my friends every single day ask me like, hey, like, how do I get involved? Like, how do I coach these kids? So there's a lot of people that benefit from in Fuego. And I just, I would have loved the opportunity to be around the coaches that I work with every single day and my boss, Alex. I mean, it's just a really inspiring thing to do. So yeah.
Thank you.
Alex, I mean, since he brought this up and, you know, the term student athlete, I think a lot of people forget about what that really means, is student first athlete. So I'm gonna put something else on you. I mean, are you guys interested in any kind of way to help out with some kind of tutoring program too for these athletes?
We already do that.
Okay, good.
So I just wanna say something and we, we talk about entities in, in Fuego and Little League. But the reality is, these are only separate entities as, as businesses. Or let's say, we're really here for the kids. And this is what we're trying to do. Grab all the attention we can for these kids to get wherever we need them to go. And we hope that as Metro and as in Fuego, we don't separate each other, but we unite. And I know it's hard for Little League to understand those things because we have a, a deep, you know, this man was, been Little League, what, forty years?
Quite a few years, yes.
And it's hard to change. But if we don't change with the times, it's gonna pass us by. And we need to unite our kids. That's what it's all about. It ain't about you, it's not about you, it's about the kids. And getting our community together. So I hope this works to, to what we see it, to fulfill it. And it's gonna be bigger than what just baseball, softball. It could be a whole lot bigger. Our imagination can go anywhere we want it to go. But if we don't all work together to, to get where we wanna go, we're not going nowhere. So with this, I just wanna make sure, I'll let you talk in a minute. Um, but I do wanna get this going because we do have some other things going. But, um, I thank you, sir. I thank Metro. I thank all of you guys, uh, for what you guys are doing, uh, with us and with the other kids. So, uh, I hope for a bright future. We already had the discussion. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so ordered. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, guys.
Next, Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successors, Successor Agency and City Council Consent Agenda. We have a total of twenty-four consent items, number seven through thirty. For item number thirty, we have revised staff report and ordinance which has been provided to the council. Deputy Attorney, City Attorney, can you please read the title and ordinance number one-one-four-seven and one-one-four-nine?
Ordinance number one-one-four-seven, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Santa Fe Springs, amending chapter one-hundred-nineteen, reserved of the Title XI Business Regulations of the Santa Fe Springs Municipal Code to Establish Procedures Related to Special Events Permits. Ordinance number eleven-fourty-nine, An Ordinance of the City of Santa Fe Springs, Adding Section Thirty Point Twenty-two to Chapter Thirty, City Council, of Title III Administration of the Santa Fe Springs Municipal Code Relating to City Council Reorganization.
Is there a motion and approval for the consent calendar with, of staff's recommendation?
I had a quest, I had something to say about item number thirty.
Item number thirty. Go ahead.
Is that the reorganization? Okay. I just wanted to say about this, uh, item thirty is that it is, uh, the structuring of the city council, the mayor pro tem and the mayor. So there won't be voting on it anymore. It'll just go by succession. But I wanted to say that this didn't even need to be here because I had no problem in allowing a mayor pro tem, if that person is in line to be a mayor pro tem, to go be a mayor pro tem and the next one be the mayor and just rotating it already. We did not need this on the agenda. And as a matter of fact, I didn't need it on there. However, I wanted to say that, uh, I wanted to say how bad it was for my, uh, my peer up here, uh, council member Zamora. He is the only one here that no one followed the order of succession. He has been on council for nine years and he has never been mayor. And I don't think that's right. I don't know why we are starting this today. I don't know why we're starting this now. But council member Zamora has never been mayor because politics or what have you. I don't know. And I will humble, of course, I'm gonna humble myself and I'm gonna say that I would like to say I'm sorry to council member Zamora on my behalf. I hope that my peers can, can chime in. But I would like to say, I am sorry that you did not have the opportunity in the nine years that you've been on council to be the mayor of this city, this great city. I am very sorry. However, we are all gonna look into the future. We're all leaders. We wanna move forward. We don't wanna move backwards. We want all of us to work together as a team and we have. And that is why our city is even more successful now, this year, than I have ever seen it. We all five are working for the residents of Santa Fe Springs. You are number one. If we have differences, we put those aside and we focus on the residents and the safety of our residents, everything. But for me, we did not have to do this because I respect the order of succession. And I've talked to our mayor. By the way, Mayor Sarno, I think you've done a fantastic job this year as being mayor. And I wanna thank you. We've come a long way. We decided to, to come a long way for the sake of our city and, uh, rise above anything that was personal. And I like that. I do like it and I, I respect that. And I wanna say thank you. But again, I just wanna say to, uh, council member Zamora, he's done a great job in the city. He gives back and he serves our city greatly for everyone. So again, I wanna apologize for him. Thank you.
It's alright, you guys clap. I, I wanna bring up, this was an idea that I had when I first got on. And I thought it was a good idea for the exact reason of what, what you said. No person should ever have to miss their position of being, sitting up here and, and this is not about us being up here. This is about you guys, the people that you vote for, to see us succeed. Because the people that you get to see rise to the occasion. And again, no person should ever not have to get, sit in the seat and be, and realize what it is to be the mayor. And that's why I wanted to stop it. I don't want the power to be within us. Because politics get played, things happen and it's not fair. Because all it takes is three of us not to want that person to be here. And I'm sorry, Joe Angel, that this has happened in the years, but I'm trying to stop it today. Day late, dollar short, whatever you say. But if I don't try to do something today, then we can't move on to tomorrow. And I understand if you don't like it or if you do. But this is my way of saying I'm sorry, that I think we should move on and not put the power in our hands anymore. And let the succession be the succession. Because we don't have a succession plan. We have our own judgment of who we want up here and that's what the problem is. So you guys can blame me for this. But if you guys wanna do it, you don't wanna do it, I just don't want this to happen anymore. That's the bottom line. So as we see it, if you guys want to take out, uh, item number thirty, I'm perfectly fine with it. But whatever you guys wanna do.
I think that's why you're the mayor, Jay. I mean, you, you're, you're changing a lot of things and, uh, thank you. You're putting things the way they should have been a while ago. And like you said, emotions get involved, everything gets, you know, in the mix. But you had good, you have a good heart and good thought of moving forward. And this year we have been exceeding more than we have in a very, very long time. And a lot of it has to do with our leadership. Our leadership that we have with Renee, with Nick and our staff. And that's what we needed. So thank you.
And I can just say that, you know, it's been said, you can't change the future or the, the past, but you can change the future. And that's what this item's all about. I appreciate the comments paid by council member Rodriguez, by the mayor. And that's why I like item number thirty because it will change the future so it doesn't happen anymore. We can look into the future and keep making Si, Santa Fe Springs a great city to live, work and play in. So with that, I'll-
I have a comment.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I mean, i- i- it's different when it happens to you, you know? And your, your family and your friends and different voters are, you know, they have these hopes and these expectations for you and, and they wanna see you in that title and they're, they wanna see you as mayor. And you know, when people, you know, use their authority or they use their, their thought process to say, hey, I'm gonna take that away from that person. I mean, i- i- it just becomes a, a form of a bullying process. And, and you know, of course, we teach our kids not to do that. And I, I thank, you know, council member Annette and mayor, you know, Sarno for, you know, publicly apologizing because, you know, during that process, it was a public humiliation they tried, you know? And, and you know, it's, you know, so I do appreciate what you're trying to do, uh, Mayor Sarno. And, and you know, I, I do respect it. And you know, is it long overdue? Yeah, it is. And you know, i- it is a process that people hope that they play or they don't play. But, but it is politics. It's, you know, politics is, can be pretty ugly. I mean, we see that in our world right now that, and sometimes individuals want to stay in power and, and you know, and I think when I first came in, it wasn't, um, it wasn't about that. You know, if you're not part of the norm, you know? And I think you know that, Jay, that, you know, people are not accepted. And so now it's one of those things that, you know, we are in a different place. And, and I know certain individuals may not wanna hear this in the audience, but I mean, it's just, you know, it is what it is. And, you know, we're here now. So I mean, just, hey, I mean, I do appreciate the thought process. So those who are not happy with it, you know, it, it's, it's, you know, what can you do? I mean, other than that, I mean, I've told my family and my, my, my mom, my little brother. I know to them, I mean, you know, I know it means a lot to my mom, but my little brother just loves seeing me up here. He doesn't understand because he has special needs and, and you know, you, it's, I know four years ago, you have people who, well, you know, were going around telling people not to vote for me and, you know, and then you have somebody come up today saying, hey, that I'm saying it. I was out of town. So, so I'm like, oh, you know, it's, it's weird how politics just play out. And you know, you, you just see how people just wanna continue to play games. So I mean, I, I just truly appreciate the gesture, Jay. I truly do. So I do, you know, so with that being said, I would like to make the motion. So I move.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so ordered. Appointments to boards, committees and commissions. Council member Martin.
None tonight, thank you, sir.
Council member Rodriguez.
None tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council member Zamora.
None tonight.
Mayor Pro Tem Rounds.
None tonight, Mayor.
And I have none. Council comments, conference reporting, council member Zamora. Let him go first.
Uh, I just wanna-
Sure you report what, you're supposed to report too.
I'm not reporting that.
Oh, your mom left, you're alright.
No, it's, it's fine. Um, so I, you know, throughout the years, you know, we, we have our ups and our downs. And you know, this year has been one of those times where, you know, God has showed me just different things and what the meaning of life is. And you know, I, I, you know, a couple of months back, you know, I suffered a heart attack and not knowing that, you know, what was going on in my life. And, and you know, you end up at the doctors, you end up, you know, in a situation. But you know, a sense of peace just comes over you. And you know, and, and I haven't talked about this, I haven't told too many people. A lot of my friends don't even know and family. So I, it's just one of those things where you just put it out there to God. And you know, when things happen in your life, you know, you either have a great big problem and a small itty-bitty God, or you have a great big God and a small itty-bitty problem. So I'm just glad that I serve God. So thank you all for being out here. And I also wanna bring up about the, the pool, um, the aquatic center. Uh, you know, just once again, that we name it after Paul T. Nakamura and do our best that we can. So other than that, God bless you all.
Thank you. Council member Martin.
Just, uh, I'm so excited with that, the, and Fuego's not here anymore, but the, the partnership that we're gonna have with them, it's, it's great. Our kids need that. So that, that's awesome. Uh, summer's coming to an end and all the events have been great. Gus, it's been awesome. And the pool, it's full, like we live right next to it and it is packed all the time. It's great. Um, just have a great summer and let's move forward and we're on the right track now. Thank you.
Summer's over. Council member Rodriguez.
I just wanna say the same thing. The, the pool was amazing. Thank you for putting all that together. We all jumped in the pool. I don't know if everyone saw that. We all plugged our nose. We didn't wanna get water, but it was very, very nice, a beautiful pool. It's gonna e, look even more beautiful as we proceed. And I just wanna thank everybody for being there, supporting. And also Pioneer Day. Uh, I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in coordinating that. It was so much fun and so many kids. Uh, Bill, thank you for being there with me and, uh, Joe Angel, we, we had so much fun. I think every year, this city is getting better as we move forward. And we're just so successful, we're so blessed. Uh, by the grace of God, we are all coming together and we know what's important. So thank you very much.
Guys, find any gold? No gold?
Gold nuggets.
Gold nuggets?
Yeah, we got those.
Mayor Pro Tem Rounds.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, thank you for the residents for being here once again. You know, you're, you, you wanna know what's going on in your community. Uh, and how, uh, what a better place to see it than to be here and hear firsthand. One of the, my favorite things is the beautification awards that we're giving away because it shows the residents take pride in their city. And to have that many ten and ten businesses and ten residential, it's just amazing. So, um, I wanna thank everybody that worked hard to make that happen. Somebody stated about summer's over almost, but, uh, summer concerts, movie in the night, uh, movie in the parks have been phenomenal. Uh, great participation. You saw earlier the slides showing the, the increase by our, uh, social media. So, uh, staff, you're doing a great job with what every, everything you're doing and, uh, keep doing it. So everyone have a great weekend, thank you.
Thank you. Um, not, not one person mentioned the potato bake. I get to mention that, nice. If you guys, I know you guys went to the potato bake, we've seen a lot of you guys. Uh, Chief, they were great as always. Thank you guys for, I hope you guys raised some good money. Uh, wanna thank Maggie's Pub for donating the potatoes. Last week, or last council member, last council meeting, uh, we talked about how this city manager over here is an athlete, but he can't dive into a pool. So, uh, today I'm gonna tell you that he really is, uh, a hero. So we were at a meeting at, on Lakeland and Laurel and we turn around and, well, where'd Renee go? Well, he was on the phone. He wa, he was dressed just like this with a hard hat on. And I get a call like two minutes later, I'm in pursuit, I'm in pursuit. What does he mean, in pursuit? He's chasing a criminal down the street, almost a half a mile with the hard hat and he catches him on, uh, so he was on Lakeland and Laurel and he caught him on almost Imperial and Carmenita. Chased him all the way down. And then today, he saves a colleague's life from having a stroke. He was at a geezer's on a meeting and the person was explaining his, uh, problems and he goes, I think you're having a stroke. So they rushed him to the firehouse and they found out he was having a mild stroke and they took him to the hospital. So he made up for his, uh, crappy diving, but you, 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 you saved yourself, sir. Just, you know, I just wanna say thank you. You know, this is, i- it's a hard job. You have your ups and downs and, you know, what you just seen up here a couple of minutes ago is heartfelt and, and we're all human and we all have feelings. And we, we try to act like we don't. And we try to act bigger than we really are. But the reality is, we all want what's best for you guys. And we have to learn to do that collective. So with that, I thank you guys for what you do every day. It's not easy. And- And it's an honor to be up here with you guys right now. So you guys have made this a great year for me and I can't do anything without all of you. So thank you guys very much and, uh, I adjourn this meeting.
You're gonna cry.
I was.
You're gonna cry.
Same myself. Shh. Be quiet, don't even try. Do I get this?